It's kind of me in order to say we've moved that force out of the way to get started. See if you can do the prior forces, everybody stand for application for Mr. Harms to the new our place.
Most precious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the privilege that we have to be able to even present ourselves before you. Thank you, Father, for your precious love and care and guidance for us. Pray that your hand will be upon the meeting this evening, that each member of the council and each one who might speak would speak according to your will, that your perfect will will be accomplished this evening. Thank you, Father, for allowing us to live in a country where we can freely speak. Pray, God, that we will be courteous to others and considerate of their positions as well. Thank you, Father, for the protection that we have for our military. I ask, God, that you will continue to watch over and protect them as they protect us and provide us the freedoms that we have. Thank you, Father, for all of these things, in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Stanton?
Here.
Alvin Raisner?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Alvin Harris?
Here.
Alvin Johnson?
Here.
I'll say it, I don't ever say I. It's going to streets, I don't have anything, I think Mike's got everything on the streets
that we've done, and doing most of it. Going with police and fire, Vice Mayor Anderson.
I asked Chief White if he would come up and give a report for this last month.
I don't really have much to report on, sir. I've given you each a report as to activities for the past month, wrapping up a couple of grants as this year ends up and having to do some modifications on next year's GHSO grant, and looking to start working on our Safe Routes to School grant probably here in the next month.
What kind of cuts were they doing to the GHSO grants?
My understanding, sir, that there was a $5 million cut across the board, and that's affecting just about everybody in the state. It's my understanding we'll probably get about $15,000. That's, that's pretty much, I was talking to Springfield today and Greenbrier, I think that's kind of the limit, everybody's $15,000.
And what was our grant last year, was it $30?
It was 28, 26 or 28, I believe.
So, how about Pat?
Yes, sir, it's hit everybody pretty hard this year.
Hey, Chief, before you sit down, you've done a great job on this equipment that you received from the government. Can you tell us about the latest two things that you received in the city?
Well, actually, in the last month, we got some, we got some really nice containers that have storage boxes inside, and got those to start storing some things inside of them that we have here at the office. We've also received some generators. These generators can be used in case of any type of, you know, natural disaster or anything, as well as we could roll one up and have, you know, some electricity here or at any of the scenes that we happen to go to if we're working, like we're working over at Shedden Road or something like that, again, if we want to get electricity over there in that area, we can handle that, so we have four of those. Also have two pretty good sized tractor trucks, they're the big ones. Looking for a trailer now where possibly we can, we can haul some of the stuff that we get instead of having to pay somebody to haul everything that we get. So, that's kind of where we're at right now.
You've done a great job on that, I wish we really appreciated it.
Thanks, sir.
Steve.
Yes, since July 21st, when y'all last met, we've just had 15 calls. Eleven of them were medical calls, 10 were, of that medical 10 were inside the city and one was out. Four other ones were car wrecks, them three were transported, or three were not transported, which we just kind of, kind of put down under mislaid. We did have one today, which is motorcycle right there, on the curb around Woodruff. They did transport him, but he was more fortunate, won the L L, and messed it up pretty good. But other than that, he has a probably just low case shoulder. We've had 15 for the month so far.
Let me ask a question. Ray, when's the last time, I mean, I know from time to time we get helicopters, and I hear sometime six times a year or so. Have we had anything like that lately?
Probably not since the first of spring.
Yeah.
It's a blast in my head. But if they pick up now, it's cause schools in session, a lot of time Greenbrier uses it cause the high school parking lot is there, landing zone, and when that's full, they move down here.
Do we have lights around our?
Yes, Lord, got to.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question. I know the insurance company called me three times in the last two weeks about Brown Road, Brown Lake.
Brown Lake Road, yes, sir.
They want some kind of compliance, and said they've got a few, and they didn't get it.
Well, a question, I've called, I'm not the city attorney, but who knows, P M L or M T A, trying to get something to tell me which way we could go with it. Problem is, somebody, anybody know where Brown Lake Road is? It's right on the county line, if you go out to Bad Ridge Road, it splits our church, that's south of Bad Ridge Road, you go to the very end of it, where it crosses the creek, you cross over into Decks and County. If you go to the left before you cross the creek, that's one part of Brown Lake Road, which is still on the creek side, the Robson County Creek side, you access it pretty easy. There's four houses on the right side of Brown Lake Road. To access them, you gotta go across the creek, which is probably a good 30 feet, and it's solid rock, this rock bed. You go down the road, probably here, probably 50, 60 feet, take a hard right and come back across the creek. Then you go up an incline that's creek gravel, and of course, he's coming up for insurance to be renewed on his house, and he's in our Ridgestop area for the first call on that house. The question is, if we sign it and there comes another, or something, we can't cross that creek, is the city liable? And that's what, well, I think Phyllis actually, when I talked to her, she sent an email, says actually, that's a county question, cause that's not in the city area, but it's in our city, our, our fire zone, not in the county. So, I never got a legal answer to that. So, if their house catches on fire, and I put it to EMS, if they had a medical call on one of them four houses, I mean, we can try our best to get there, but if we can't get there, after we signed this contract saying that, that we're going to provide in fire picks, if we can't get there, is the city liable for whatever department? And that's what I never get an answer on. Their due, I want to say the first of September, is when their, their insurance goes up, $600 something a month. We're over $13,000 a year, I mean, every, I know it's 13 plus, they said it's going up, but I was just trying to get a, I don't want to sign off on that, knowing that we've had one call in there in the early, I want to say early, probably mid 80s. There's a little conflict going between the last property owner on the Robson County side, with the easement going around to them four, and that's a civil matter, and he's got that blocked off, so I can't, I can't say I can cross his property without getting permission. But more to it, I'm just, I'm not signing off on it. I mean, I'd be glad to sign off on it, but if it holds the city responsible, we got to pay for a $500,000 house that I couldn't get to anyway, then I stepped back, had to look at it a while. I called M T A and Phyllis, Phyllis, and I think Phyllis actually had her email, but I didn't print it off, was like, we don't really need to sign anything, that's a county matter. So, and nobody in the county has been able to answer that question.
The last time she called me was, I think, only, he can't, what I understood was, only he's basically trying to find out if who's covering. If he's in our area, then I guess we're responsible.
Yes, he's already called Greenbrier White House, which I told him that upfront, I said, when you get, if you call in a truck to fire, you're going to get all three departments paged out the same thing. But on a map, you're in the Ridgestop area, your first call is, if it's a medical call, they'll call Ridgestop first.
Again, would we be, wouldn't be more liable with him than we would be with anybody else outside the area, would?
Well, it's just having to cross that creek, that's, most time you don't really cross the creek, like, and there's some question about going down a small lot across a wooden bridge, I'm not saying I'm doing 500 mile trip, across a wooden bridge, plus, some of them, it's a rickety, you can't hardly cross with a pickup. And some of them actually got a side road where you can cross, but if that water's too high, it's with the truck weight, it's like with a car. If it's that, if anything gets to that end of, of the creek, it's rolling pretty good. I know the guy that's got the easement, that's got it blocked off, he said with a make-in flood gun, I think, I think of three or four steps to get to his living area, and he was on that third step to retire one of them.
What do we need to fix his problem then? I think his, well, the question I got from the insurance company today, this is the third time they've called me, was they just didn't know if we were in, if he is in the Ridgestop covered area.
Well, I've talked to a lady that called from the insurance company, and she called it two minutes before, and the time I got it, and returned her call at like two or three or four minutes after before, there was no answer. And she said she leaves before, or off by until 4:00. But I never actually talked to her, talked to that gentleman, had been out there three times, and talked to the guy that's got the easement blocked, that owns it, there's a lot of conflict between him and the guy that's needing his insurance now, the other three property owners that aren't worth, they probably won't tell their, their insurance company. But as far as, do I need to go out there and give them a piece of paper saying, yes, we're covered, and then hope they don't ever have nothing, I hope they don't. But if we can't make it, just cause if the grade on their driveway is too steep, a lot of duty to come back on the city, then, then the city's got to take it. That's why I'm just trying to find somebody to give an answer.
You know, that's like a properly written letter from our attorney, saying, yes, you are in our coverage area, we'll provide service, you know, if we can, because most time we can.
But the insurance company don't like hearing that you.
I understand, yes, I understand. But I think right now, they just want to know if they're.
Well, he can't get, he can't get insurance on his house, what I understood, I don't know, but.
He can't get it without it going up $600 something a month. He can get insurance, anybody can, but that's, and he said that's, and he said.
From five to 10, and he's trying to find out where he's covered at, and what I understood that he is covered, but the city don't be reliable, but if, if that's our coverage area, I guess we almost have to do all that.
Well, if we, if we try to go out there tonight, and I'm not saying we won't go, and we'll say we're trying to get up that trackway, but if there's something that's, just like if, if nature raises that water up, we can't cross it for some reason, or it's washed his driveway out, up on his, on the incline, then is the city liable for that?
I'd say thank you, go over to Shedden Road, if the bridge washed out, they couldn't get their houses on fire, I mean.
If Shedden Road, Pay Road, everybody looks at it, when you talk to attorneys, which I'm not one by no means to know what we want.
I just tried, I don't know the gentleman, but you know, as far as him being covered, if he's in our fire zone, then the city, they should give him a letter.
But you're good with liability of?
I'm not good with any liability, but that's what it takes, and that's what we have to do, because that's, that's the area we signed off with the county to get paid for every year to cover. We've got to give him a letter.
But if you go back and hearing this, the easement, the guy that owns the easement to that property, keeps everybody on this side of the creek, there was an agreement, I haven't seen nothing written, there was an agreement that there was a bridge supposed to be built on the second one, not on the first bridge crossing, but on the second one, and that was never done, so, and see, that's awful, that's awful, I want to say a county road, so that's why I don't see how it's a, I don't say, I hate to say it's not our problem, but I can keep my driveway up, call someone to come in either. So, that's, and that's what he could do.
I understand the concern, I just, I mean, if that's our fire covered area, I don't know how we could not give him a letter, it's like.
Well, there was a lady, actually lived in City of Ridgestop, it's been a while, and she put two, I think it was brick columns, and they were in there, that we couldn't get our truck through it without just slowly poking, and I think it had full mirrors in and all. And I asked her to talk about that, and I said, no, if we park that here at the road and pack that hose to, to say to the fire hall that far away, which is off the road, then a lot of work, work between now and then. And she said, what did I need to do? I said, well, if you could widen that zone. To me, that's common sense, you don't have a big truck, a delivery truck, anything, why a parked truck? And she actually did it, but that's, it's been a while, so.
I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying, I'm just saying if he's in our fire covered area, then I think we probably need to give him a letter, regardless of the condition of the road or whatever.
Our attorney, that's what, and I let him get the email, our attorney said, we don't need to sign anything, that's a county matter, and that's what I'm trying to relate with the county, but we have no.
But it's not a county matter, it's part of our fire covered area.
Well, it's in the Robson County.
I know we signed off on the Robson County to cover certain areas, we get funded every year by them to cover those areas.
I can go back to Tom, saying, write a letter, saying, if I can make it, we'll beat that.
I think Phyllis is saying, was saying that the county needs to tell her that she's in our fire zone, and let them make a statement of whose fire zone she's in, not who's liable, not, but whose fire zone she's in, that it should come from the county, instead of from the city of Ridgestop.
Well, I mean, that is our fire.
Right.
We've already determined that.
But she was saying, Phyllis, Phyllis is saying was that it should come from the county, and she, they should be requesting that the county, not from us, because it's dispatched out of county. So, she should, they should go to them to, to request that.
And that's, that's just like people that, that live, well, not meaning the city, but that's got gated houses, that, you know, I basically tell them, or when I know they've got a gate, I say, no, I don't know that combination, or you don't, you're not able to push that button open, we're going to be sitting there at that gate. So, there, again, that question hasn't ever come up, but who's liable to get to that point? Are we liable if that house burns, even though that's in our area, but it's blocked off? I'm just asking, man, if, if I see.
I mean, we can't get access to get in some where it's not our fault, where there's a creek, or block gate, or whatever, but if he's in our fire covered area, we owe him a letter, regardless of creeks, whatever, if there's something blocking that we can't get to him, then that's not our fault.
Is Phyllis comfortable with anybody with the county? Does she get a conversation?
Actually, I talked to Kelly once, and you talked to her?
Yeah, I don't know if she, I don't know if she went further, she just said that we need to, to add, to talk to them or request for them, or if this gentleman could request for them as well. If he's, if, if that's what they were truly looking for, it's just something asking for where their fire coverage is, I mean.
I think they know, I mean, I've told them, that we're the first one, they're in our, if you can get the mouth draw pencil out, we're, they're in our coverage zone, but actually getting to it is the next, who's liable for that if that thing happened.
You've got two different situations, you've got who's covered for it, and then who's liable for it, is what they're asking, basically.
Well, we're, we're past the who's, who's area it's in. We're down to, if I can get there, and his answer is, well, I pull a 30-foot trailer in there, well, get his 30-foot trailer in there, and he goes in, backs up, and comes over. And I, I said, sorry, I got it.
So, last, our trucks will be all thrown onto a gravel bed, or?
Oh, yeah.
Lot bed, and then a gravel bed from the creek.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, but, and it's been that way, we've just never, just hadn't come up till he had renewed his insurance, which I don't know how long, and I think he's lived out there for a good while.
I don't have any idea.
I know the guy from the easement has lived there since early mid 60s, but that's where we used to go in. So, I mean, there wasn't ever that many calls on the backside, like we're trying to get to now, but there's two other, or four actually, houses back there.
Personally, I think we need to have Phyllis talk, have a conversation with the county, and just work out, get a proper answer.
Dollar more, that's, that's a company.
That's all well and good, if, if still, if they, they're in our fire covered area, we're still responsible, period, no matter if there's a road grader sitting in front of us. I mean, if we can't get there because of an interruption, that's not our fault, but they are in our fire covered area.
But when there was supposed to be a bridge built by that person?
I mean, I understand.
He said, yeah, well, no, so that puts us in.
I'm not saying it doesn't put us in it, but they're in our fire covered area, and the county pays us every year for that.
That's probably a matter of the public record, we shouldn't have to give a letter for that. They could go to the county and say, who's fire district am I in? Oh, okay, and they should be able to report that to the insurance company. I've never had to give a letter to, for insurance.
I have no idea. I just know that the insurance, I don't even know the guy, but the, you know, insurance has called, talked to me about it, and I told them, if they're in our fire covered area, then we should be able to give them a letter. So, I understand what he's saying, you know, it's, we can't get to it, you know, the counties aren't going to back us up anything on that, because we signed off with them to cover the fire covered areas that we signed agreed with, and we get paid every year to do it. Except like, we're in a, we're in a, we're in a bad situation where we can't get places, but we still have obligation from the county to cover those areas, regardless of the terrain or whatever it is.
Okay, well, I appreciate his cautiousness, and I think the idea about wanting Phyllis to have her either draft a letter, or instruct us as to how to handle it, because of the possible liability of when you say who's responsible, who's responsible for that area, but, man, we're not responsible trying to go on a probable liability, like we, just in fact, you just can't do it.
And this is one better once you get to about four.
All I'm saying is, it, you know, it's put the city in an unforcing situation.
Yes, it does.
But at the same time, we are liable for that area, we signed a contract with, with the county to cover that area. It's our area regardless of whether it's blocked, or it's a ditch, or a creek, or it's no bridge, it's our area.
I mean, would be safe in a letter saying that your house, or your property falls within our service area.
I think that's all they want.
Y'all good with it? I'm just, I thought I was just saying the liability part of it, and I was trying to get these out of Phyllis or M T A, and, or, nobody goes out that way. I tried EMS to go out there and just drive down that road, he's had to go out there.
If Phyllis is going to be contacted tomorrow, let her make a call, I'm just saying, it's already gone far enough that there's caused a lot of caution amongst all of us here, so I think that Phyllis, these folks, that, you know.
Well, it comes down to where the gentleman wants the letter, saying, well, can you go talk to the guy with easement? Well, I can go talk to anybody, but that's, that's.
Not your.
Between him and me, I don't, you know. But I'll call her tomorrow, that's, please.
All right. All right. It's going to the parks, Mr. Raisner? I'm sorry, your plan was out of line, I'm sorry.
I have nothing to plan on, John.
All right, it's going to the parks, Mr. Raisner.
We got our next movie to, this Saturday night, at 8:30, construction has begun on the pavilion, Ridgestop Station, bringing, but, running has been started, about 50% completed at this point, and our next part will begin September 1st, that's all I have.
Can you show us?
Yeah, we had our T R A inspection, and went rather good, I was surprised at them, I shouldn't say surprised at them, but anyway, we had three outstanding violations, it was from the last T R A inspection, and apparently this is going to fall back on the T R A inspector, because we did what we were supposed to do, but that inspector never came back out and did their inspection for the second portion of it. And so, you know, when I did, did our T R A inspection, this time, over the last three, did we have, what, two years ago? Was that inspection?
We got, never came back.
Never came back. Well, we, we do have a couple of minor, but I don't know exactly what those are until about a month, so probably next month or four, takes them a month in order to get all the, the, the. But they should be very impressed with what we've done with our assets.
I bet.
We also had an incident, which I think, you know, they're very concerning, the Watab School, we were actually running electricity from the school itself to our metering station, and during the time period when they, you know, were digging it up in order to put the new system in over at the Watap School, they cut into that, and so our metering system went out. I did send a letter to Metro informing them of that, I also sent, we got them back up, they were down for 19 and a half hours. We got back out, I went ahead and sent a letter to Metro notifying them, I didn't bother to send one to Phyllis, because we haven't signed that agreement yet. I also notified Metro that we will be down for approximately four hours within the next two weeks in order to take that electrical that's temporarily hooked up and actually hook it up to RV, which we thought it was hooked up to to begin with, and we can basically come right out of the, to kill them there and tie it directly into, and so it can be on. And so they are aware of that downtime, when we do do that, then I notify them at the time period, and don't make any adjustments from that, otherwise, everything else, everything else is looking.
Good job. It's going to finance, Johnson.
We're one month into the new budget, so everything's doing fine. One thing we tried to organize for September is to hope to have a census meeting, so we can start getting that organized and ready to go.
All right, you know, we're trying to get signal, city board.
I have a couple of things tonight. In your packet, I give you all an email that I received from Attorney Johnson concerning this commensurate who had hit our city sign some time ago. He is requesting that she make restitution by making monthly payments, and that's something that the board will need to consider if they want to allow her to make a monthly payment on that, or if it needs to be paid.
She have insurance on her vehicle?
I was under the understanding that she did. Did she not have insurance, chief board?
I was under the understanding that she did also.
That's what I thought. But according to this letter, she owes seven, $1,795 for the damages, and he's proposed for her to pay $75 per month beginning September the 15th, and continuing the 15th of the month until it's paid and full. So, it'll take, it's like two years worth of payments, you know, for her to pay this in full.
Worth of Metro to 500%.
Right.
Excuse me.
Was she written a citation for the red?
Sir, you're stretching no matter here, she, she was actually arrested, I believe, the same.
Okay.
That, that was the day, I believe y'all ended up going down, or some of your men went down there.
That's what the insurance did.
Yeah, the car was there, and there was no one anywhere, and she said she was driving like two days later, and that's probably the reason the insurance will not do anything with it.
Yeah, I'll cover that.
I just need you guys to sit down on that, maybe later in the meeting decide what you want to do, maybe they will make a motion. On property taxes, I had reported in May how much outstanding property taxes there were, since then, we've collected $2,789 worth of outstanding property taxes. DDD partners, business license, we were having a hard time getting him to get a business license. As of today, he has finally paid 2010 through 14, and is eligible to apply for a business license with the city of Ridgestop. John Poole will be here on September the 3rd to begin our audit, and the Lions Club come by the other day and dropped off a drop box for those who have extra eyeglasses, their requests and donations for, to be sent, or dropped off, so that they can pass those out to those in need here locally in Robson County. And the only other thing I have is that we have Smoke on the Ridge coming up, October the 3rd, and we're still accepting applications for vendors and advertising.
What, what is that called?
Smoke on the Ridge.
Smoke on the Ridge, it's our blue dress festival.
All right, it's going to Obin's Reverbal Sue. I think we brought this up last. I think we brought this up last year. I remember, right?
I just received a phone call from Freddie, um, this past week and Saint Mike has the information.
Did you, did you know where that phone call was up?
Sure. He called, he is still inquiring as to whether or not, uh, the city will, uh, forgive the thirty-four dollars and fifty cents a month that he has charged on the sewer for the vacant lot down here on the corner. He doesn't, he just doesn't feel like that that should be charged. He originally had, uh, paid it in the beginning and then he stopped paying it and now he said that he is fixing a sale of property or has someone interested in buying the property. And because we have a lien file against it, that, um, whomever was looking at the property, um, found it to be a shady deal and so they, they, they had the idea that they were going to back out of the sale of the property. And that if they did, that were, he wanted us to know that he was going to file suit against the city, uh, for this lien against the property. So he wanted me to relay that message and to say that you guys were, would reconsider that charge.
How much is the Alex?
Three thousand one hundred and eight dollars and forty-five cents. That's, uh, seven twenty-nine fifteen.
Well, the last time he was here, he told us that the property was in his watch that. How is he responsible for it?
I did, this is, this is shady. This is real shady. Some of you, oh, that I've done in a short amount of time, this has brought to my attention. I'm going to be honest with you. I think we need to table this for this month and we approach this next month. Uh, my whole reason being is that, uh, the documents that I've finding, there's a lot of crazy stuff going on here and I want to verify a few things before I proceed any further in the video. So, no more statements.
I'll make a note to tell you what the next one, here's a second.
Second, also.
Call it, baby.
You're not, you're not considering removing the lien or anything, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question. In the phone call, was the phone call that had, uh, sense of urgency to it? Time is of the essence or something or?
Now, he just said that, uh, he would like to make a present to councilman if he's called back.
Is that Mrs. Commercial?
Yes.
That body is Mrs. Commercial? Because the last time it was used was a residential, so that's correct.
Right, and that's about, he's only being charged, uh, residential rate.
That's correct.
So he's being charged a minimum plus usage.
But there, there's not a water meter there because White has pulled it in.
But there is subject that there. On another factor, that I brought up last time, I actually went out there on nine eight, two thousand fourteen. That's just not over for all. It was hooked up. It's there. It's been there. It's been there since, uh, nineteen ninety-seven. According to the documents that I have, where he actually gave up some of, uh, his, probably his, uh.
Our property, we, we hooked that up. The Alex's house was there or whatever it was, sometime over there.
And that's his other, uh, argument is that sewer was never hooked up to that piece of property. That there's not sewer tank and that, uh, sewer was never hooked to that property. But, but there is sewer because they've done the tank and it shows that he was tied.
Yeah, I've actually got to talk to him.
Yeah, I remember. We, the Welch's moved there, they.
That's why I'm asking.
Stayed for the next month.
For a month, yes.
It's going to New Business, Shane Stewart.
Shane's not here tonight, but I'm still waiting for him if that's okay.
I think he looked at it like that.
Then that's probably beneficial to him, but, uh, I'm, this, I'm Becky Masi from the Ridgestop Opera Club and last year you guys, uh, gave us the opportunity to have a five K in town and we'd just like to ask if we could do that again this year. Um, seemed like everything went really well. You guys were very supportive of it. We'd like to do it October eighteenth. If Chief White is okay with the route that we used last year, if not, then we'll get with him.
You have any problems with that, Chief?
The, the route was good. That, that was easy for us to work.
October eighteen?
That's what I'm looking at.
How many people were ringing?
We had forty-one participants.
Excuse me.
We had forty-one participants.
That's a good time.
It's really good for first year. And they were done in another hour.
How many of you have finished?
All of them.
I see a lot of them.
We have three two-year-olds.
Two-year-old, yeah. Like he was sleeping most of the time. Grandma's carrying.
Doctor.
Are we still going early in the morning?
Yes, seven a.m. We like to, the time to start seven a.m. Be done by eight.
Yeah, it's last year, we started right at seven a.m. on Sunday morning and by, by eight twenty-five, we had most of the companies picked up. I mean, it's, it's pretty quick and the way the layout is, it's, we, we need a few helping hands here and there and I'll bring in, I'll be here and I'll bring in one problem.
I, I'm good with it. Anybody on board or a problem?
Thank you.
Just ready to run and do it?
Yes, come join us. Appreciate it.
It's going to Sessions' payment contract. Okay, Sessions' payment contract.
We heard that last one.
Yeah, we heard that last one for, uh, two hundred and nineteen thousand. Uh? Six nine eight ninety, thank you. Cause I do not, I cannot believe this. But anyway, uh, that was for, uh, Warwick and, uh, East End and all levels going across. Uh, we do approve this, we're seeing the tri- I'm also, uh, I'm going to ask that, because we wanted to add a couple more roads, which, uh, almost Springfield Highway and Nelson, when we bring parts down to two sixty-six, to have those two roads down. And I wanted to see if we could, I've got a resolution here and I want to do it.
Nelson's about halfway down, I think.
That's correct. It's just from the city line.
The whole road, the whole Springfield, that sounds pretty cheap for both of those. That sounds rough, gee.
I've got a resolution here that, uh, I want to be able to ask for two hundred thousand dollars. Well, let me, let me try to do this. Look, we had, uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand, whatever we said a little bit ago. Uh, we've got twenty-nine thousand coming out of the Wataboo School permit, building permit. Got eight-five thousand coming out of the sewers. We've got twelve thousand cap coming out of the Gas Road Department, uh, for rent, which equals a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So that leaves us, uh, to borrow one hundred and forty-one thousand in order to make that two sixty-six. I'd like to be able to borrow up to two hundred thousand and so we can take the possibility of Yonk over here once we get a culvert up underneath Yonk, right toward the intersection because it's, uh, torn up pretty good and any other small repairs that we might, uh, find along the way. So I've got a re- resolution here, uh, asking that we go ahead and approve this and, uh.
Chopped out later, who?
Uh, it's through, uh, ten nine seven.
What's the right, two?
Two point six five.
What's that like, our height? What's that like, our height? There's still, there's still, one or two of those, though.
It's going to be a six year, though.
How, how are we using eighty-five thousand on the sewer?
Because we're doing all the sewer process. And so what we do is we take the ramp, I got it, the cost is all of us.
That's going to make sure it can go right.
Oh, we're doing it the proper way, doesn't matter.
When you're adding Nelson and Old Springfield Highway, are you using the numbers Jason come up with or is that actually from Sessions?
No, that's not Jason come up with. Yes, that's not exact number.
The rate is two point eight five.
Excuse me, my voice, huh?
Hands on the six shirt, huh?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number fifteen dash oh three.
I'll say, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jeff, you live on that street. Does Greenbrier got the other end paid?
Sir?
Does Greenbrier have the other end of Nelson or Sycamore paid?
It's in producing shape.
So where it drops off, it's like it's really bad.
It's in rose match shape in Ridgestop. It's spider webbed out, really bad.
It's really bad. That's how the sheet made it for both of them.
Do I have my driveway to that? Get that ready.
For two hundred fourteen thousand, we'll do it.
Yeah, we're going to burn them, we're burning them on you.
It's going to the write-off utility bad debt.
That was insane. We've been working really hard on the, um, gas and sewer past due amount. And we have worked up everything that we can work up to try to collect on our bad debt. Um, and I'd like to ask the board to write off the remainder of the bad debt that we have. I broke it down into three categories. Um, those that have no current address or that's been returned to us. Accounts over five years old or those who are deceased. And I've given you totals on each, um, service on sewer is six thousand six hundred fifty-six twenty-four. On gas, it's five thousand, uh, seven hundred fifty-two twenty-nine. And I'd just like the board to, uh, and pray to write that amount off of our list.
I'll make a motion to write it off. I hear a second. Call in favor, say aye. My motion's carried.
Thank you.
Sewer transaction charge to contract with Gills.
I've got a couple of changes we need to do on this contract. Back there on the very left, excuse me, article ten, on the very left page. They got listed wrong as far as our maximum daily flow. They got us listed as Miller'sville instead of Ridgestop and they got us that we should not see two hundred thousand gallons per day. Our Metro contract stipulates that, uh, up to two hundred and forty thousand gallons per day and ten thousand gallons per hour. I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and approve this contingent on them changing the contract to, uh, maximum flow from Ridgestop, not to see two hundred and forty thousand, uh, two hundred and thir- excuse me, two hundred and forty thousand gallons per day and ten thousand gallons per hour.
We went over it with this, went down there. I had no problem with it unless it was graded.
Exactly.
You made a motion, I'll second it. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion's carried. Have you talked to anyone down there recently about that? You have a chance, dude?
I have not, no.
Do you get help? I think she was at the office too, or, uh, I think they were in a convention, uh, written with a conference.
I left a message for both of them today.
I did talk to Kelly and she did agree with all of that.
Next thing will be your ordinance, two thousand fifteen one oh seven, the zoning ordinance.
The zoning ordinance was brought up by the planning, zoning board. And basically, what they're wanting to do is that we have four car dealerships.
You got too many.
We got too many on Highway forty-one and so, uh, section five point zero five to one point one, C one general service district, we're going to delete that entire section. We're going to add to that section and we're going to add C, which is no sale or rental. Automobiles, boats, motorcycles and motorized vehicles shall be located on property having frontage on or access to US Highway forty-one. And in order to accommodate that by legal standards, we've also got, uh, the development plan concept, which y'all didn't get, I've got it right here, uh, that was actually done in two thousand and two and extends to two thousand and twenty. Uh, it's a development plan on, uh, expanding commercial property. And so there's plenty of commercial property available if anybody wants to sell in that area for a car lot to be located in that area.
Where does that end? Orange. Where does that end?
Uh, this is, this is Highway forty-one, this is, uh, Old Springfield Highway, right here. All the property, uh, everything in between. Uh, this is King Street that goes back here and around that.
So those streets are commercial for that type of business?
Yeah.
And how about?
Well, we only have one, we only have one commercial district.
Right.
So, now we can add it, we can split it up into, into different districts and this is just easier, easier way to, uh, present this. But it does give a better.
So what you're basically doing is no more lines on forty-one that have to go in there.
They have to go on this side, yes.
Which is what, King Street?
Yeah, King Street, uh, I'm sorry to print off lunch.
King Street, Old Springfield Highway.
And all this doesn't, like, or they can't do that?
They can do that, yeah, because that, uh, according to this development plan concept that was done in two thousand and two, uh, all that, we, we can change that into commercial, no problem whatsoever. If anybody wants to sell according to this plan. And actually, some of it goes down the rear road also.
So that's what, uh, a lady I need more lights on forty-one, correct?
Yes, the existing ones over there will stay though.
What if one closed and someone wished to reopen it as a facility for someone's car?
If it's, if it's under thirty months, you pretty much have to allow it. If it's over thirty months, then a non-conformant clause kicks out and then we would not allow it.
This is ordinance, two thousand fifteen one oh seven, zoning ordinance. I'll make a motion to approve. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next thing will be fire utility employee.
Excuse me, one thing. I remember to attach this with the ordinance.
That's already been taken, planned, ordered and everything?
It's always, always come up. Yeah, everyone's always ready to present. They want to present that, so we'll meet after our meeting.
Uh, okay, on the fire utility board, uh, first, uh, two parts to that. Uh, this company, Thursday morning, uh, based, the department heads, Kelly, Keith, Tony and, uh, Arman Harris, uh, to meet and work out a few details, uh, and questions that's come up about this position. Uh, and I think they're going to meet Thursday morning at eight thirty, is what they want to do. Uh, we posted the job internally and we have one applicant. And what I'm going to do is make a motion that once the department heads finish the details for the new employee, that an interview is scheduled as soon as possible and along with Keith and I was with Tom, uh, and Mike, to be on the interview board and interview this employee.
Are we, are we not going to?
Who's the, uh, only, I have a case, I have a couple of guys.
Zach, Scott. Zach.
Do you live in the city?
Little one, Barbara. Pete, Tom, Mike.
Did we protest on the budget? Are you going to get somebody? I know we talked about it. We did. What was the amount that we were talking about?
Uh, he's. Wait, he, he, actually, this position will start at thirteen and I'll replace him for the first year. As I were going to do this position. I mean, that's what we, that's kind of the numbers I've worked out. If, if y'all want to change it, we can make some changes, but I place it on thirteen for the first year.
Well, we're going to be on, uh, Thursday, they didn't want to discuss.
Yes.
Prior to even doing any, or any of those.
So, yes, when they, uh, when y'all are photo com, we'll have to work it out in details and schedule an area.
We've got a hundred and one questions.
Two minutes left.
Yes.
Time to begin, or?
No, two. Now, I made a motion that I already, yeah. I made a motion, uh, that once the department heads have finished the details for the new employee, uh, that an interview, uh, is scheduled, uh, as soon as possible, uh, being Heath, Tom, and Mike on the interview board. That's my motion.
I'll say.
Call on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go back to the seventy-five dollar per month issue with attorney Johnson. This is, can you start? Yeah, can you start?
I'll make a motion, we allow her to pay it in this session, as outlined by the attorney.
I'll say. Is Phyllis aware of this, that she didn't, and I know we're only talking about it?
She is, she actually, uh, corresponded with me to send that information. I don't, part of her correspondence pretty much said that the county doesn't, the, that the courts office doesn't, um, is not in the business of collections, but she didn't advise, like, what we do.
I mean, if you don't want her to do it, you're never gonna get nothing, so it's better getting nothing.
I mean, is that the only, within that twenty-four months, can we not ask to do it over twelve months? People will do it.
I don't, I don't have a problem asking her to do it that way. I'm, I'm, I imagine his financial situation is why she's come up to figure out. I don't, I don't know her financial situation, but...
Well, there's a hard enough financial situation that she felt the need to seek legal representation of, you know, to assist her at this request. She already had some, uh, amount invested here. And trying to, you know, to work out it.
Trying to get around that anyway. Very... I'm not interfered with that. We, I don't remember what happened, but are you familiar with that case, Chief?
Yes, it was, it's been over a year ago, she, she ran all over the sign. Keep it close to here, I'm sorry. She ran all over the sign, or someone ran all over the sign and left the vehicle there. And, uh, she was riding, her owner stated she did. But my only concern is, is, if this would be for Phyllis. This is a misdemeanor charge, which the courts would lose all jurisdiction over this person after a point of eleven months and twenty-nine days. I know we're not seeking an agreement with the courts on this, we're doing it straight with her. But let's say she makes four payments and then makes no other payments. What is, what are you gonna do then?
That's why I was asking if Phyllis is advising us to take the seventy-five dollar a month payment or pursue another avenue, because that probably will, sometimes that's what happens.
And the other issue, we're already a year into it, I mean, she could have already been doing something for the year toward the sign. I mean, we're only three years into her for our city limit sign. I, that's a good point on eleven twenty-nine, too. I mean, after that's gone, I mean, we have nothing to bother with.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna go to a court.
This, this is in Sessions Court now?
It is in Sessions Court.
And I believe they're waiting on this deal right here to, to take care of everything. That is my understanding. I had an offer that was in court only about, maybe a month ago, two months ago, and this come up to you, Mr.?
Yeah, it's been about nine.
Okay, that, that was his last court appearance, and, uh, that was the only holdup in court, was her restitution to us. My, I guess my question would be, if there was a way to do a motion to accept it, unless, I don't understand why she can't pay the restitution to the courts like a lot of other folks do, and then let the courts send us that, that check. Because I see that a whole lot, restitution going to the courts.
Alman might prefer it goes to the court, because then the court can, can, uh, gauge it, and if she doesn't pay, then, you know, she's gonna conduct to court.
Right, and they will get it, or keep her on probate, or keep her, you know, in that probationary period.
That's a lot better option, I like that one, so. Man, you go about doing that, I'm, I'm not familiar with that.
We'll need to talk with the district attorney and with, with Jake. And if this board won't be, and Kelly invited to enter into some kind of, uh, a deal with them along with our attorney, uh, we can talk to them. I don't like calling DA's office and, and asking them if that's something that could be done in this settlement agreement. I, I would feel better for the city is if this was restitution to the courts.
Oh, I agree one hundred or something, you know, that.
At least, at least if, if there is no payment, she's violating her, you know, probation.
And then the, you know, continue. I know the way, does the court charge anything for collecting that from the city?
There, there is a, a fee, it's, I'm sure it's five or ten percent, but I don't know exactly.
That comes from the...
Ten percent on houses is what Mr. loves it, so that there is a fee that they have to pay.
And that normally comes from the person paying, having to pay restitution at the beginning.
Oh, yes, yes.
So basically, what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing is that, you know, they're trying to go this route in order to get out of paying that extra ten percent restitution, uh, through the courts. But however, this puts us in a, in a predicament, too. I would much prefer to go through the courts and have them go ahead and, uh, make up on restitution.
If Chief quits paying after four months, and I hope she doesn't, if we win this round, Chief quits paying, and we just create more paperwork for us, then we'd have to go. Chief wants to go find her, he is, swear on.
Well, actually, we'd have to have Phyllis Morris go find the civil services where we would be. And now we're paying attorney's fees and, and everything else over fifteen hundred dollars or seventeen hundred dollars. Then we'll be, but on, on those things we write off.
That's point two.
I'm not saying we can't do the restitution, and I understand what you all are saying, that, you know, a little bit's better than nothing. Uh, but if you would like for us to try to work out some kind of negotiations, uh, if, if that's okay with Kelly, me and Kelly and, and Phyllis can try to work something out.
I, I would prefer that, I'll say, if I'm about to wrestle.
I make a motion to, to try to work out through the court.
I'll say, call on favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm just getting our workshop, I mean, I know we got some, we asked here tonight some citizens, but do y'all have any comments, or?
We're just enjoying the, the process that we got. This is, uh, my son, Isaac, he is here with, uh, true three twenty-four scout troops, so we're here just watching the process.
Glad to have you here, Doc. Any other citizens comment?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to comment about what the Chief Reeser was saying in insurance, and I may be the only unlucky person here as far as insurance is concerned, but insurance companies, starting July one, they, some have been doing it for, for a while, but I, as I understand it, they're all gonna be inspecting everybody's house on a renewed-type basis. And if you got an insurance policy in effect and it expires in September, within the first forty-five to sixty days after you renew, there'll be an inspector come by and look at your property. The question is, where's the closest fire department and who's responsible? If they've got a question, as in the case Mr. Reeser's talking about, they're gonna ask for a letter from somebody. They're also gonna give you a list of stuff that you need to do to your property, such as fix the driveway if it's got holes in it, fix the yards, or fix, there's holes in it that may stumble and fall on it, trees that are rubbing your house, side, roof, whatever. And they're giving you a sheet that you've got to fill out and send back in and say that you've done all of this in order to keep your insurance coverage in effect. Now, I don't know how far they're gonna push that, or how much, but on my personal properties that I've got, that took place for me, you know, in July of this year. So, if you have on God, that, you're gonna get it. And if you, at least, as with most insurance companies, I think, is gonna follow suit with doing all of that.
My insurance got a big deal for about five years.
And, and if you're not within so many miles of a fire department, your rates are also gonna go up. And Chief Reeser and I talked about this earlier in the year, because the ISO rating we have, correct me if I'm wrong, we've got a five, right?
Sure.
Working on trying to get a four. The insurance, uh, people that look at whatever rating they look at, the ISO still has us a seven if you were outside the city of Ridgestop. So probably what's happened to this gentleman you're talking about, his rate's gonna bump way up because he's outside the city of Ridgestop. That gentleman is outside the city of Ridgestop, his letter needs to come from the county, telling the insurance company what fire zone he's in, in my opinion, because the county is his jurisdiction, not the city of Ridgestop, even though it's Ridgestop Fire Department. Fire Department, Ridgestop's agreements with the county, the county should be giving him the letter stating what fire area he is in. That's just the way I would look at that situation.
What's the problem with the county director, or why would I direct him?
Uh, we're, we're, you don't even know? I've given the county number, but I haven't heard anybody from county unit, either say anything about it.
Well, it sounded like all he wanted was a letter saying what fire, his district he was in.
That's what I understood.
Insurance. And in that being the case, since he's in the jurisdiction of the county, the county should be giving him one big, give him the letter. That's my opinion.
They're still been upsell, kind of, they're paying us a fee, as a sub.
Well, they're paying us a fee of rooftop recovery, but we're not the governing body of, of that property owners, what I'm saying.
Exactly, they're, they're paying us a sub, so therefore they, they have, they should...
We're just a subcontractor.
Yes, that's what happened.
This has come up four or five times over the years, the same thing we're talking about.
Well, it does, it does happen, but the insurance companies are getting bigger and bigger about those kind of things. And we as citizens shouldn't be keeping our property up anyway. That's not the point either, but it's, it is happening, and they're gonna make sure.
Any other questions or comments?
I got one.
What did you say?
Like, it was Friday night, electricity on Highway forty-one was out from Long Motorway to the Greenbrier, Ridgestop, City Limits. Ridgestop was the only department that had a place to mount their directing track. I would say that.
And that was our newest officer, our cop.
Yeah, that was Aaron, and I also asked Tomlin to come in and work for a couple hours, because one man cannot handle that much stuff.
No way.
And Tomlin didn't hesitate and was down here for about twenty minutes to help him out.
Oh, did you find out what happened? Because that was a lot of coverage right there, it was a long time.
That's other than two hundred, right?
Any other comments? I was going to the workshops, did you?
The next meeting is September fifteenth, if you all want to be, then they're not before.
Yeah, we have one hundred and seventy, one hundred and forty-four.
Let's see if you can deep up with that.
Last month, we had a discretion on the driveway below Sheridan, and, uh, that's Mr. Kelly got a little digging, and that drive, that second driveway is home, home by house, is partly owned by house owners. So we, if we're gonna do anything, we will have to be contacting him on the drive, along with the Beaver Dams or whatever we have going. I know Mr. Phyllis emailed, or sent an email back on what we should, shouldn't do. But you want to talk to him?
Sure, thank you.
How about you, you got?
Can I get a copy of the email, too, from Mr. Phyllis or John?
I'm ready to send it to me.
I'll, I'll show back and move.
We're gonna follow this. I might see a copy of that, I might see that, too.
Excuse me, I want to work a couple of time.
Six thirty.
Any other business coming forward? I'll make a motion to, to, June, if you're say.
Second.
Call on favor, say aye.
Aye.